Welcome to our regular city council meeting for the city of Pocatello, December 1st, 2016. We'll begin with Agenda Item Number One, which is Roll Call.
Adamson.
Here.
Gray.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Or. Black.
Thank you. If you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then afterwards on Agenda Item Number Two, if you'd remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by Tamlin Carson, representing the Buddhist community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we be a guard for those who need protection, a guide for those on the path, a boat, a raft, a bridge for those who wish to cross the flood. May we be a lamp in the darkness, a resting place for the weary, a healing medicine for all who are sick, a vase of plenty, a tree of miracles. And for the boundless multitudes of living beings, may we bring sustenance and awakening enduring like the earth and sky until all beings are freed from sorrow and all are awakened. Evoking the presence of great compassion, let us fill our hearts with our own compassion towards ourselves and towards all living beings. Let us pray that all living beings realize that they are all brothers and sisters, all nourished from the same source of life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is our Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. Item A, Payroll and Material Claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of November 2016.
Good evening, council members. I'm Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city, and tonight I'm presenting the Payroll and Material Claims Report for the month of November. Payroll and material claims totaled $5,379,884. Payroll-related claims were $3,459,268. We had 677 employees at the end of the month. We had net changes within our positions, an increase of one in the full-time status, a decrease of one in the half-time status, an increase of six in the part-time status, a decrease of five in the seasonal status, for an overall net change of one. I've been -- the vendor claims totaled $1,920,615. I've listed the vendor claims, which represent $10,000 or more dollars. Aetna, $27,285, medical insurance premiums for retirees for November. Anderson, Julian, and Hull, $21,662, legal for the police and fire union, professional fees and litigation. Banning planning organization, $31,800. Street Department, professional fees, this was for traffic signal coordination and operation improvements. BBC Research and Consulting, $16,742. This is the Community Development Block Grant, October 2016 Consolidated Plan and Analysis of Impediments. DEQ Drinking Water, $50,922. Water Department, 2017 drinking water fees for the state program. We had $16,974 connections. Ferguson Enterprises Incorporated, $29,308. Water Department, Johnny Creek Manifold Surge and Well, number 35. Airport Projects and Supplies. HDR Incorporated, $116,081. WPC, this was the phosphorus design engineering services. Idaho Water Company LLC, $21,425, water department. Water Rights Purchase Partial Payment, Del Coats. Kaplan, Kirsch, and Rockwell, $23,526, legal department. August and September, professional fees for the Pocatello Airport. Ready Service Jobber Incorporated, $22,462. WPC Contractor Application Number Four, WPC Lab Edition. Platinum Directional Drilling, $69,000. This is the Water Department for Waterline Improvement on the Cypress-Dogwood-Ebony Project. Positively Fourth Street Plumbing, P4S, $12,000. Water Department, Waterline Improvement, Cypress-Dogwood-Ebony Project. RSCI, $425,418, WPC. Phosphorus Project Contractor Progress Payment Number Seventeen. Sierra Works, $22,209, Community Development Block Grant, professional fees for the West Sublet and East Carter Sidewalk Project. Traffic Markings, $83,000. This was for the Street Department for Paint Striper for Pavement. Idaho Power Company, $180,300, multiple funds for the electric utility. Wells Fargo Purchase Card Program, $224,655. This is the November P card cycle with 570 transactions. I've listed the remaining marked vendor claims for your review, and this report explains 82.25 percent of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I have presented the November Purchase Card activity. We had 570 transactions for the month totaling $224,655. We had 144 cardholders use their card, and I've listed the four purchase agents who had monthly totals more than $10,000, and I've given some descriptions of the type of purchases they made on those cards. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Alessandra Toscanelli to serve as a member of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, replacing Dorsey Hill, who resigned. Ms. Toscanelli's term will begin December 2nd, 2016, and will expire January 1st, 2018. C, Human Relations Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Fran Lanz to serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Ms. Lanz's term will begin December 2nd, 2016, and will expire July 2nd, 2018. D, Police Canine Ownership Transfer. Council may wish to consider a request from the Police Department to allow transfer of ownership of Police Canine Jackie to his handler Corporal Josh Hancock for $1. The canine is being retired from service. E, Idaho State Certified Local Government Grant Application Planning Department. Council may wish to authorize submission of a fiscal year 2017 certified local government grant application, subject to legal department review, in the amount of $5,800 to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office. This annual grant is used to promote historic preservation in Pocatello. Mr. Council President, I move we approve this agenda.
Consent Agenda.
Councilman Johnston, do you have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Adamson, any further discussion? Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Agenda item passes. Agenda item number four, Communications and Proclamations. We don't have any proclamations tonight, but I do see very prominently some Cub Scouts with us tonight. So, thank you for being here. You walked in so quiet. It's almost like you didn't even walk in. You just appeared. Would one of you like to stand up and tell us what pack you're from?
What what?
What pack you're from?
315.
315. Great. We're glad to have you here. I hope you learned something about city government tonight. Hopefully, it's not the wrong thing.
I already know not to do the wrong thing.
Do you? Good. Good.
Me too.
Agenda item number five, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On December 5th, we will have a special meeting with the Grossman Group LLC at 3:30. December 8th, at 9:00 a.m. will be our regular study session, and then December 15th, at 6:00 p.m. will be our next regular city council meeting. Other events that are occurring, December 2nd, tomorrow night, will be the movie night for local youth grade seven through 12 at the Marshall Public Library from 6:30 to 9:30. They'll be showing Captain America: Civil War. If you'd like more information, please contact the library. The Festival of Trees is currently going on at the Stevens Performing Arts Center, and we'll go through the third. December 3rd and 10th will be the Wild Winter Weekends at Zoo Idaho from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. December 15th and 16th, Pocatello Regional Transit is offering the 29th Annual Holiday Lights Tour, and tickets are available at the Transit office. For more information, you can call them.
Do we have any idea how much those are?
Nominal.
Anybody know?
No, I don't know.
$5.
$5.
$5.
$5.
$5.
$5.
$5 for adults and $3.50 for?
For kids, eight and younger.
Eight and younger. Fantastic. Thank you. For your information, the Marshall Library has shortened service hours in December. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then the hours, regular hours, will return on January 3rd. Last day to submit a design for the city's new flag is December 2nd. Visit the website at flag.pocatello.us for more information. And if you'd like to see, will it be in the paper tomorrow, your story? It's on the news tonight, right?
It already ran. One of them already ran.
Okay.
So, it ran today.
It ran today. Okay. We have people from countries around the world that are submitting designs in 38 states, did you say?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I like 38 better. It sounds better. So, I'm gonna stick with that. No objection. Thank you very much. All right. Agenda item number five, we just finished. Number six, Taxi License Denial Appeal Larson. John D. Larson will be present to appeal the decision of Police Department staff which denied Mr. Larson a taxi license. Sergeant Daniels.
Is Mr. Larson here? Is Mr. Larson present?
Okay, then. Thank you.
Notified.
Okay.
As the letter is notified.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any discussion or motion? That item dies to?
Lack of emotion.
Or, yes. Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven and eight are public hearings. There's specific procedure that we follow here. Number seven, Public Hearing Program Year 2017 to 2021 Consolidated Plan. This time has been set aside for the council to accept testimony on the draft program year 2017 to 2021 Consolidated Plan and Assessment of Fair Housing. Following the public hearing, council may wish to authorize submission of the plan, along with any additional elements required to meet U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD requirements. To HUD for review and approval. Once approved by HUD, this document will govern the expenditures of Community Development Block Grant funds for the next five program years. Following its review, the CDBG Advisory Committee recommended authorization and submittal of the plan to HUD. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Melanie Giggly, Division Manager for Neighborhood and Community Services. As Mr. Brown just read, tonight's hearing is to allow comment on the draft Consolidated Plan for Program Years 2017 to 2021, which kind of boggles the mind to even say such a thing. The documents are required as an entitlement city receiving CDBG block grant funds from HUD. The plan creates a framework and sets priority goals and objectives for projects to be funded through the CDBG program for housing and other community development needs. The Analysis of Impediments or Assessment of Fair Housing identifies potential barriers to fair housing choice, as well as goals and objectives for reducing those barriers. The plan was created by BBC Research and Consulting after public input processes, including an Internet survey, focus groups, and interviews with nonprofit and housing agencies. NCS staff has worked with the consultants to refine the draft plan, and the CDBG Advisory Committee has reviewed the plan and recommended its adoption. The draft plan has been available for public comment since 10/1/16. This copy's here at City Hall, at the library, Life Incorporated, Housing Authority, NeighborWorks Pocatello, and online, as well as notification to many public and nonprofit agencies. No comments have been received, either verbal or written, regarding the plan. And Heidi Agler of BBC Research and Consulting is here to provide a better overview of the planning process and the draft plan itself. So, I'll let Heidi go ahead.
Welcome, Heidi.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm gonna walk through a brief PowerPoint before we take questions and public comments on the Consolidated Plan. I think slideshow.
Yeah, it's somewhere.
Go to the right.
It's got it.
Uh-huh. From beginning, should work.
Yep, it will.
Great. It's wonderful to be here. Go ahead and go forward. Tonight, I'm gonna talk about the Consolidated Plan and the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. I'm gonna discuss our primary research findings, and then we'll have a discussion, and we'll take questions on the Consolidated Plan. A bit of background on a Consolidated Plan, this is a document, as Melanie mentioned, that's required of any city, county, or state that receives, that's an entitlement community, meaning that they receive the Community Development Block Grant. There's some other associated grants. Pocatello's not big enough to get those other grants. So, you're a recipient of what we call CDBG, and in order to get those dollars annually, you have to do a plan every three to five years. You're on a five-year cycle. You also have to report annually how you will spend the dollars that the city receives, and tell HUD how you actually spent those dollars a year later. There's also a fair housing component, which I'll talk about in just a moment. That fair housing piece has changed a bit over the last couple of years, and your commitment when you receive federal dollars is officially, and this is written in the Civil Rights Act, is to affirmatively further fair housing choice. That takes the form of a study that identifies not only barriers to housing choice, but as we've learned more about how important economic opportunity is, particularly for children in the United States, HUD has asked cities to look at access to economic opportunity. And I'll talk about those findings as we go through the presentation. It's also important that cities or states that receive these funds take meaningful actions, that's another HUD term, to address the fair housing challenges. So, eligible activities, as with all federal grants, there are certain things that you can do with these dollars and things that you cannot. The typical activities for a community of your size, you can see here, reconstruction or rehabilitation, typically of homes, but certain other properties can be rehabilitated. Demolition of property to prepare land for other uses. Down payment assistance to help low and moderate income renters become homeowners. And then provision of what HUD calls public services. These are basically operating dollars to assist supportive service programs, serve special needs populations. HUD defines those as at-risk youth, persons with disabilities, persons who are homeless, seniors, victims of domestic violence, and persons with HIV/AIDS. Less common uses of CDBG for communities of your size, primarily because CDBG is size-based, so you don't get a ton of money, is construction of community centers, parks, and recreation facilities, or facilities to serve special populations. Construction or improvement of public facilities. If you didn't have an accessible city hall, for example, you could use those funds to improve accessibility. Provision of employment assistance, this is typically done at the state level, and not many states do use CDBG fund for employment assistance. It's a tricky use of CDBG. And then some cities, usually larger cities, will use CDBG to pay code enforcement salaries. Those salaries must be restricted to the individuals who are providing code enforcement in low-income areas. What does the city of Pocatello receive from HUD? About $375,000 annually. CDBG nationwide has been cut dramatically over the last 10 years due to federal budget limitations. The past activities in the city of Pocatello include home accessibility modifications. So, that would include retrofitting a home so that somebody with a disability could access their bathroom, for example, more readily. Housing rehabilitation, demolition of substandard properties to prepare those for new affordable housing, property acquisition for infill sidewalks, park upgrades, some community center improvements, purchase of a homeless youth facility in the past, homeless shelter improvements, improvements to neighborhood infrastructure, as well as some public services. So, those operating dollars to support nonprofits. We did quite a bit of community input in addition to this public hearing to ask people how they felt about the priorities for housing and community development in Pocatello. We had an online and paper survey that was distributed to residents. We had about 250 respondents. We held a focus group. A colleague of mine was here earlier in the year, Jen Garner. She talked primarily with people with disabilities. And we held a roundtable discussion, which 35 people attended. This was in conjunction with the State of Idaho's Fair Housing Study. So, it was mostly stakeholders we talked mostly about for housing challenges in Pocatello. And then we supplemented that with interviews with local experts on public housing, as well as disability issues. So, we put all that together and into a draft report that's been available for public comment over the last month. When we took the data, as well as what we heard from people, we came up with the high priority needs for the next five years, including housing rehabilitation. Housing rehabilitation under CDBG must be used to benefit low-to-moderate-income homeowners. And this would include repair, emergency assistance. So, if my heat went out in the winter and I was a low-income individual, couldn't make that repair, the city may be able to help me out, as well as accessibility.
Can you give me a figure in terms of what we're talking about?
I'm sorry?
In terms of low to moderate income?
Sure. It's, low to moderate income's defined by the federal government annually, so it's 80 percent of the area median income. And you can think of that as a range of somebody making about zero up to about $40,000. You can sometimes exceed that 80 percent under CDBG. It's adjusted for family size, though. So, it's typically a family living in poverty and twice a family living in poverty, twice as much money. Creation of affordable rental housing, so building new affordable rentals. Improvements to public infrastructure systems, especially sidewalks. The advocates and people with disabilities said they'd like to see more sidewalk improvements or continued sidewalk improvements. Supportive services for people with disabilities, elderly, and persons experiencing homelessness. And then finally, job training and skill building for under and unemployed residents. Fair housing challenges. One of the new ways that HUD asks cities to look at fair housing, which we have incorporated into this study, is looking at the populations that are mostly affected. And HUD's provided a bunch of data and maps at both the city as well as the state level to be able to assess that information a little more deeply. We took advantage of those data and maps for this study to demonstrate to HUD that you're progressively thinking about fair housing challenges. Infrastructure issues came up, both in the survey, in our conversations with individuals, largely related to sidewalks in the older part of the city. This is not an unusual situation for an older community. The populations that would be most affected by lack of sidewalks or sidewalks that are crumbling would be elderly and persons with disabilities. Labor market readiness. HUD provides some data on where people who have lower labor market readiness, meaning they're experiencing under or unemployment, or they may not have high levels of educational attainment, where they live in Pocatello. They have, according to the HUD maps, people in Pocatello have easy access to jobs, so transportation or moving across the city to get to jobs is not a barrier as much as that educational attainment. Based on HUD's maps, this is more true of persons of Mexican origin, Spanish speakers, persons of Philippine origin, as well as Middle Eastern origin. Access to quality education. Children in some parts of Pocatello live in neighborhoods that have lower educational proficiency than the city overall. Those are typically children living in poverty, some children of foreign-born parents. And then access to rental housing. We looked at complaint data based on fair housing violations that have occurred in the last five years, and some low-income renters seeking affordable units have experienced some discrimination. That's largely related to religious beliefs. Housing goals. So, we put all this information together and come up with five-year goals, both for the Consolidated Plan as well as for fair housing. I do wanna pause, though, a moment and let you know that overall, the comments about Pocatello, as we're going through this process, were very, very complimentary. We do this all over the nation, and we, you know, typically, the way that we present this information is in the negative because we're identifying needs. But we had many, many people comment on Pocatello being a very welcoming place, a place where people with disabilities find it easier to get around than almost anywhere else in Idaho. And at the same time, we have been doing a study for the state of Idaho, and Pocatello came up as a model city, particularly for fair housing in many, many cases. So, that said, housing goals would be to continue your housing rehabilitation program. This is based on the estimated 5,000 to 6,000 people in Pocatello who said they have repair needs. These are mostly windows, sidewalks, and driveways. So, that came right out of the survey. Support the development of assisted rental housing for the city's households earning less than $15,000 a year. $15,000 a year. This is a tough segment of the population to reach because it requires really heavy subsidies. So, you'd be looking for help from the state, from the federal government, to be able to meet this need. You currently have a shortage of about 1,300 units with rents of $3.75 and less per month. Those are typically units that are provided by a public housing authority, so deeply subsidized units. These individuals are people living in poverty, and comparing this with where we were five years ago, you haven't seen a big increase in that gap, which is really wonderful. So, in a lot of cities, particularly fast-growing cities, we see that number go up quite a bit. So, you have stabilized your assistance to those populations. Some people have grown out of poverty over the last five years, which is very good news. Enhancing homeownership opportunities. The renters who we talked to in the survey said they would love to become homeowners, and their biggest barrier was adequate down payment assistance. So, there's definitely a need there as well. Neighborhood and community development goals. We've talked about sidewalks, and that this is a major concern for people with disabilities, particularly those living in older parts of Pocatello. And then people mentioned expanding services to the extent possible for low-income individuals who need nonprofit assistance. Economic development goals. We asked individuals as part of the survey, have you ever skipped a rent payment or a mortgage payment because you didn't have the income to pay it? And 8 percent said yes. That seems like a high number. It's actually relatively low proportion. I typically see that as 15 to 20 percent. Almost 20 percent, though, did say they had to find additional employment to afford their mortgage. People with limited English proficiency, so people for whom English is not their first language, and foreign-born populations in the HUD data had lower levels of market engagement. So, these are the population groups who need more job training. Fair housing goals. We've talked about the condition of sidewalks and improving those, as well as labor market readiness. Improving the performance of schools, so helping the school district identify those individuals, particularly children living in poverty, and those with foreign-born parents who may not be speaking English fluidly, helping them raise their skills and access quality educational environments. And then improving landlord awareness of fair housing laws. The city already does a lot. The state of Idaho is a good partner in promoting understanding, and so continuing those activities. And with that, I'll take questions or discussion. I'm not exactly sure how the public hearing part works, so.
Perfect.
You can instruct me on how to do that.
You're doing great. I have a couple of questions. Anybody else have some?
Heidi, I'm sure that we need to do more in terms of creating affordable rental housing. With the total pie of $375,000, that doesn't do everything we want, and it does not address at all the creation of very affordable rental housing for those 1,300 units short of less than 3.75. What do you suggest we do?
So, in that case, when you're talking about, you know, units that are deeply subsidized, you would work with the housing authority to the extent that they perhaps would like to demolish some property, could acquire some land, give them assistance to the extent that they come with you to be able to build that type of housing. You could support any efforts at the state level to fund the Idaho Housing Trust Fund because those would be dollars that would be available to you. You could support the funding at the national level. There's a National Housing Trust Fund that should provide, if it survives.
Who creates those now? Is that gonna be the housing authority, or is that private industry?
Oh, who actually builds them? For that level of subsidy, it would be the housing authority or another kind of nonprofit that would provide that level of subsidy. So, that is typically, those are-- So that is typically, those are nonprofit or federally-sponsored agencies that are in the business of providing housing to very low-income individuals.
Heidi, you have a lot to do with rental units, this Heidi.
Hi, Heidi.
How many do you have that rent for less than $375,000?
I don't even know if I do have any, do, of the hundreds of units that we manage. Yeah. So in that case, you have individuals who what we call are cost burdened, meaning they're paying more. That's based on a 30% of your gross household income for rents and utilities. So the individuals who are renting a market-rate housing, or sometimes are renting through the low-income housing tax credit program, are paying more than that $375,000. They might be paying $5,000 or $550,000. That's better than them being homeless. Ideally, you'd like to bring those rents down. But to the extent that they are slightly cost burdened and not heavily cost burdened, so not paying $800 for rent, what we're interested in is making sure that they have enough income to be able to provide adequate childcare, to visit the doctor when they need to, potentially to save for a down payment if they're afforded that opportunity to buy a home. Another product that's really nice when we're speaking of homeownership is a land trust arrangement where the city or a nonprofit or the housing authority owns the land. In my neighborhood in Denver, we have, I live in an old converted military base, and we have old army barracks that have been converted to condos, they're townhomes. The land is owned by a community land trust, a nonprofit, and individuals have been able to buy those units for about $120,000 to $150,000 and live in those units. So there's some alternative ways that you can get people at that very low-income level into some kind of housing, but it definitely takes a lot of partnerships.
I hope there are some people that want to get something like this started because there's obviously a need. I mean, we've made great progress, I know we have, but there's 1,300 people or units short. We've got to do something. So I appreciate your suggestions.
Thank you, Councilman Johnston. Any other questions? The one question I have is, we have organizations in our community that offer some similar programs. Are we overlapping our funds and services, or how does that?
That wasn't raised. Melanie could answer that as well, but we didn't hear that. I've worked in Pocatello many years, and a few years ago, probably been about 10 years, maybe, the city asked us to look at comparable communities, how they make decisions for allocating the CDBG dollars. You all have an advisory committee. And we felt like, based on our research, that you were ahead of the curve in that way, so that you're doing it very efficiently, there's not a lot of duplication. Where you typically see duplication would be in a much larger environment where nonprofits and social service agencies are drawing from a variety of incomes or resources. But we didn't hear that. I wouldn't say that that was the case. I don't know if Melanie's heard that in the past.
An example would be CECA, Southeast Idaho Community Action Agency Hotel Neighborhood Housing, which is now NeighborWorks. Are we-
One of the things we do, for instance, in the provision of new affordable housing is CECA targets, we target different income groups. For instance, Habitat, whom we partner with, targets very, very low. They can do that by their model and how they finance. NeighborWorks targets higher, and CECA targets somewhere in the middle of the 0 to 80. So we try to target to different markets or different income levels. I don't think we do a lot of overlap. There may be some, but also there's different pots of money. So if they're able to use it over here in this way, and we use ours over here in that way, it's not a bad.
Is there any self-help housing going on right now?
That's what Habitat would provide.
Well, yeah, Habitat has a self-help model, but the shop funds are another HUD fund, and both NeighborWorks and CECA have taken advantage of using some shop funds.
But is there something taking place right now on that? I don't know of any.
I think there are two houses that NeighborWorks is working on right now that have shop funds in them.
Really?
Yeah. And I suspect, I think almost all of CECA's have some amount of self-help in them.
There is. As those people go through CECA services, there's an element of education that they have to go through in order to access those funds.
Yeah. And then they have to put in some sweat equity.
Yeah.
And I was just going to say that Melanie also talked, she talked about the income variation, but there are also different models of providing people with housing, which is really important. And these organizations all specialize in different models, each of which are successful and may not meet just a standard low-income household needs. So you do need to have a variety of programs.
Any others? Heidi, Melanie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melanie, did you receive any written correspondence?
I have received no correspondence.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll open up this part to public testimony for those, any of those supporting this application.
I'd like to address Heidi and the council, of course, because there are other monies in Heidi's programs.
Please identify yourself.
Idaho Lorax, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho.
And your comments are directly to us.
Oh, okay. Heidi, Heidi. Anyways, there are other monies available. For instance, for cleanup of toxic materials in people's homes. It is a shame in this community, it is allowed to lower-income people, people that live in our community, whose children play still in uranium materials in their properties. That's renters.
I love you with all of my heart, but you need to stick to this particular topic. Don't take advantage of my kindness tonight.
Topic is HUD monies for support the BOC grants. Did I get the title wrong? I read it.
You're stretching it.
Okay. So I just want to make it available, make you aware of this. This program exists. I have been in contact with them. It is a question of educating and informing people in our community, so others in our community, and it's been addressed many times, to apply for these kinds of money to help our citizens in our community deal with these kinds of problems. So in that regard, I hope everybody can get on base here and do something about it.
Thank you, Sherri. Anyone else in support of this application? We'll move on to any uncommitted for this application. Any opposed to this application? All right. Any rebuttals you'd like to make? All right.
Do you have further questions that I could either-
I have none. Okay. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Council President, I move that we approve this submission and submit it to HUD.
Second. Thank you. A motion by Councilman Johnston and a second by Councilman Moore. Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Agenda item passes. We'll move on to the next agenda item, number eight, public hearing. Appeal of hearing examiner decision. This time has been set aside for the council to receive comments from the public regarding an appeal to, of the hearing examiner denial of Lamar Outdoor Advertising sign exception. Lamar Outdoor Advertising submitted a request to install an off-premises sign at 249 Yellowstone Avenue, which is located closer than 250 feet from a park and a residential zoning district. Municipal Code 15.20.240B-8B prohibits off-premises signs closer than 250 feet from a park or residential zoning district. This public hearing is now open, and we'll ask the folks from Lamar to give us a presentation. You'd identify yourself?
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Kent Marbo. I represent and district manager of Lamar Advertising located here at 420 Yellowstone in Pocatello, Idaho. Lamar is a national company, but we do handle the whole state of Idaho throughout Boise, Moscow, Loos, and Twin Falls, Idaho Falls, and of course, here in this beautiful city of Pocatello. If I may take one second, I wanted to say, I think it's so cool to see the Cub Scouts here. Takes me back to my days of scouting, and I'm sure I had a lot of fun, so you guys keep it up. Good job. Thank you. In regards to Lamar Advertising and the sign exception, sign permit, we'd like to secure for 249 Yellowstone. The planning staff recommended our requested sign exception for approval and stated in their report that our proposal complies with the purpose of the sign code, since the proposal is attractive, goes in line with the goals and objectives of the code and the underlying zoning of the property. And our proposal also fits in with the uses of the surrounding neighborhood, as all the uses are commercial in nature with signage for those businesses. And we still agree with the planning staff and their findings and their recommendations for approval. The uniqueness of this property and the orientation of the proposed sign helps to minimize and eliminate any visual impact on visitors to the park and the surrounding area. As you can all see in your information, there's some photographs of the area in the park that staff had taken to show where the park would be looking over towards the Yellowstone Avenue, and there would be no, it'd be hard to see the sign. The subject property is separated from the park by big mature trees and a railroad track that create a permanent buffer between the proposed sign, the park, and residential properties. The proposed sign will be oriented to Yellowstone Avenue, which really makes it unviewable and able to be seen from the park or residential area. The Yellowstone being that the sign would be facing north and south, or north and southbound traffic on Yellowstone. Lamar Advertising has taken all responsible steps to comply with the very strict requirements of the sign code and meet all of the necessary requirements of the code, except the spacing requirement from the park to residential, which up until a recent change in some wording of the sign code would have placed our sign in its current proposed location outside the necessary distance from a park. The spacing distance from residential property would have been 250-plus if this new sign wording had not been added. And if we had the old one, it was at the time only 40 feet short of the park distance at 210. So where the sign is going to be is 210 feet from the park, and now with the new wording, they're measuring it from the property lines. So that's why we're within 250 now. We feel that this is the perfect property with all its characteristics to be granted a sign exception. For the proposed property is the kind of site that the sign exception permit option was made for. Lamar Advertising has always worked with the city on sign issues. We've been proactive, and I think staff would agree with that. We've helped in eliminating, downsizing face size, relocating, rebuilding where needed. And we did help rewrite the sign code that exists today. Now we're asking from the city some of the same treatment. We have lost 13 sellable faces in the last year. This is due to, for instance, South Second Street was basically shut down to minimize traffic because of the nice, beautiful South Valley Connector, which is nice, but we lost six faces that we could sell there. We've lost faces due to trees being planted by both city landowners, et cetera, et cetera, and some development that we can't, you know, help. So losing 13 faces in one year really has hurt our inventory and our sales. And local businesses rely on our outdoor advertising for a means and way of advertising their businesses. So that's why we're asking your help in, you know, accepting the sign exception and approving a sign permit there at 249 Yellowstone. And with that, I'll just say thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Kent. Any questions? Please.
I have a question. The council had received some letters of opposition, and one of them indicated that it would be an electronic sign. And I just wanted to clarify, it's just a regular sign. There'll be no flashing lights or anything that would be visible to people that are enjoying the park. Is that right?
It'll be a static sign that we call a static sign, which would just be a basic vinyl sign. And it would be just a 10-foot-high by 22 across, and then it'll be covered with vinyl. It will not be one of the new digital signs like you see in the industry today. It'll just be a static sign. It will have illumination, but that only comes on at night and it turns off at 1:00 in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Kent, the real problem is you were approved and then the examiner turned it down. Is that-
Staff approved our sign exception.
Yes.
They came up with, if you have all the information from what staff, they approved really what the sign exception is for, based on the commercial zoning, where it is on Yellowstone, which is where signs like this should be. And then the hearing examiner turned it down for reasons being not to code. We knew that. I think that's why sign exceptions are what we are able to, you know, try to use, and we already knew it was not to code with the spacing of residential and the park, like I explained. So that's why we went with the sign exception, with the idea that where the sign is, is 210 feet from the park, or where the sign will be erected. And from residential, it was past the 250, outside the 250. But since then, new verbiage was put into the sign code to go from property lines. But still, we are pretty far away from the park, and that's why I think staff approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll have staff make a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Teri New, Assistant Planner for the city. This request before you that was stated is, the subject site is 249 Yellowstone. The requested sign is proposed to be placed on the southeast corner of the property and will be set back 10 feet from the property line. The proposed sign location is approximately 165 feet from Freckleton Park and a residential zoning district, which violates Municipal Code Section 15.20.240B-8B. Notice of this application was sent to property owners and occupants of adjacent properties of the subject site. Three letters in opposition have been received and were presented to you previously. There was one letter in opposition to the application that was presented to the hearing examiner at his hearing on October 13, 2016, where the hearing examiner denied the request. And I would like to clarify that staff recommended approval. Staff didn't approve it or else it wouldn't have had to go to hearing examiner. So I just wanted to clarify that. This concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions, Jimin.
So just for clarification, it's not an issue of whether or not, I think some of the opposition letters that I read indicated that they didn't like billboards on, you know, Yellowstone, and it was a problem for traffic and things like that. That would be approved if it was 40 feet. Is that right? It would have been approved if it was 40 feet further away. So it's not a question of whether or not we like it on Yellowstone or not. It's a question of just the proximity to that particular park. I just wanted to make sure.
And also, keep in mind, there is rubber tracks that run in between the sign location or proposed sign location and the park and the district. So that's one reason why staff recommended approval at the hearing examiner level, is because the rubber tracks are more intrusive, we felt, than the sign itself.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you very much. We'll now, we know that we got correspondence. Thanks. You beat me to it. I haven't followed the list. So next, we'll ask for those in support of this application. Anybody uncommitted to this application? And those opposed to this application? All right. Would you like to rebut any of those comments that we just heard?
I don't think so, unless we had another question on it. It will be a universal search, just to know.
Okay. All right. Well, that closes our public hearing. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? A motion would be in order.
I move that we approve the exception.
We have a motion from Councilman Johnston.
I'll second that.
And a second from Councilmember Adamson. Any further discussion? Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Moore?
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
No. Thank you very much. That item passes. We will move to agenda item number nine, short plat. South Cliff's First Edition, BBAD Investments LLC and Bear Lake Trailer Sales LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted an application to subdivide approximately 15.62 acres into four commercial lots located on Cliff's Drive. Planning staff recommends approval with conditions as outlined in the staff report. Need a motion?
Sure, I'd love one.
Mr. Counsel President, I'd move to approve the short plat with conditions and recommendations that were set forth by city staff.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second. Before we take any discussion, I know that the owner of Bear Lake Trailer is here. I just would like him to come up and tell us what he's doing there. Mr. Charet, please tell us who you are.
My name is Jordan Charet. I am actually a Chubac resident, but we are buying property here in Pocatello.
We're voting no.
Yeah. We are, we started in Bear Lake back in the early 90s. I came up here to college, actually dropped out and started moving the family business up here. And we sell horse and stock trailers, cargo trailers, utility trailers, sell everything in the trailer market. We, with BBAD, bought four acres, or from BBAD, bought four acres up on the South Cliff. We're building a 50 by 60 shop that's currently in construction and we're going to increase our line of inventory. I think we're pretty good for Pocatello because there's no one selling horse and stock trailers in this market and I just had someone from Utah come and buy a trailer from us. And I've literally, since I've been here in Pocatello, put a trailer in Hawaii, Pennsylvania, Alaska, multiple in Alaska, and Florida, I put one in Florida. So, we've kind of.
We like taking their money.
Yeah, we've not brought a lot of income into Pocatello, we've brought some, so I appreciate you guys' help and all you do and thanks for calling me up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Connie, would you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Agenda item number 10, vehicle purchase, utility billing. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for a 2016 Chevrolet half-ton pickup in the amount of $29,875 to Herning Buick GMC Incorporated. Utility billing staff is currently using a 2005 GMC half-ton pickup to obtain meter reads. The truck has high mileage and is no longer reliable for the department's day-to-day operations. Funds for the purchase are available in the utility billing's fiscal year 2017 budget.
Mr. Counsel President, I move we approve the request.
A motion by Councilman Johnston.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Moore. Connie, please call the roll.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Agenda item passes. Item number 11, police vehicles bid. Police may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and award the bid received on November 22nd, 2016, from Courtesy Ford Lincoln for the following vehicles to be used by the police department, subject to legal department review. What would we do without you?
I don't.
The bids are A, 1, 2017 Ford Expedition 4x4 utility SSV patrol vehicle in the amount of $36,217.68; B, 2, 2017 Ford Taurus all-wheel-drive AWD interceptor patrol vehicles in the amount of $30,624.08 each, for a total of $61,248.16; and C, 3, 2017 Ford Explorer AWD all-wheel-drive utility patrol vehicles in the amount of $30,247.43 each, for a total of $90,742.29. Total price for all vehicles is $188,208.13. Funds are available in the police department's fiscal year 2017 budget.
Mr. Counsel President, I'd move to approve the purchase of items A, B, and C, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Moore and a second by Councilman Johnston. Please call the roll.
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Agenda item passes. Item number 12, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appeared somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will be, either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. Note, there's a total time allotted for this item is 15 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Our first and only speaker tonight would be Mr. Idaho Lorax.
Is this a sign-up sheet for that hearing?
Yeah, it's fine. You don't need it.
Well, one thing I didn't notice that being mentioned, but Art Walk is tomorrow in our community, so I'd like to mention that. I'd also like to mention a program I'm involved in with other people and with the Pocatello Entrepreneurial Business Association. I think its title is coming out to be Coffee to Walk. Basically, a coffee festival of warm beverages during the winter, coffee, tea, cocoa, things like that. So, I look forward for that being beneficial to a lot of businesses, small businesses in our community. I like the fact that Brian had mentioned his support of small businesses, so we hope that we see more support coming out of the city. That was in Brian's newsletter. And I'd like also, I wish Mike was here, to thank him for reading some materials of what I stand for and what the groups and people I do and wanting for office here. I think it was nice the way he did that. I accept that as apology for him, so can tell him. Also, you too, Steve, for apologizing to me. Thank you for that. Nice to be cordial and, you know, to listen and read and learn and understand. The last thing I want to deal with, of course, is communication. Ian Dr. Seuss, I assume that's his name, the director of the Marshall Public Library.
Cease. Cease, his name is Cease.
Oh, is that the way he pronounces it? Well, Dr. Seuss to me.
It would be.
Anyways, to avoid situations like occurred this week with him, embarrassment and, you know, issues of having to call the police on me because I was in the library. And so, I think you, the city would be, another would be welcome if you informed the community here, at least city offices, that, you know, the case against me for trespass was that you were illegally processing me or not allowing my due rights. And so, it is no longer the case here, so we should inform them so they don't get embarrassed and have to come and apologize to me about calling the police on me, okay? Thank you, appreciate it. Otherwise, have a nice weekend and come down to Art Walk tomorrow night.
Thank you. Sometimes it's hard to keep.
We'll get this coffee talk going, huh?
Sometimes it's hard to remember when you've been trespassed and not, so, happens so often. Thank you very much for participating tonight. We appreciate that and with that, our meeting is over. Thank you.